Planning mission meeting for September 2nd, 2025 is called to order. We have the roll call, please.
I just.
Member Peterson, absent. Member Sparks Gillis?
Here.
Member Ziegler?
Here.
Vice Chair Adler?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Brandon, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
College allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the good, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So would anybody like to change the order of the agenda or make a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four oh, one absent. Public comment? Public can address the commission on agenda, on items not on the agenda and on consent. Is there anybody who would like to speak in public comment? There's nobody online. Okay, then we'll move on to consent items. Is there any questions on the minutes or the development list?
I have a comment on the minutes, item five. My name is misspelled. Please correct that.
Anything else?
Nope.
You're gonna get a motion to approve as amended?
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four, one absent. Ex parte communications. Anybody have anything they'd like to?
Nope.
I do. I had a meeting on Friday with Ed St. George to walk his project down on the corner. It was very interesting. Spent about an hour and a half and he was explaining his thought processes and what have you. So it was interesting. I learned a lot. There's, it's a lot different seeing it up close and personal than it is looking at drawings and reading specs. So let's move on to public hearings. Could we have the staff report, please?
Public hearing to consider an appeal of community development director's determination approving amendments to facades and building covers, colors with modifications to a previously approved development plan for seventeen oh four Mission Drive, APN one three nine two four oh zero three three, planning application twenty five zero three five.
Thank you, Lisa. So the item for you is seventeen oh four Mission Drive proposed facade and material changes. So just to give a little bit of background on the project. Thank you. So between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, the applicant submitted various iterations of the proposed development. In July twenty twenty three, the DRC allowed the item to move forward to the Planning Commission. And then in December of twenty twenty three, the Planning Commission approved a development plan for the hotel cottages. In December of twenty twenty four, a building and grading permit was issued for the site and then construction commenced thereafter in late December twenty twenty four. There was a period in which construction did stop, however, it was restarted again in spring of twenty twenty five. So just to give a little brief background of where this project is located at, it's located at the intersection of Alisal Road and Mission Drive. It's in the area highlighted in black and then there are some site photos of the current construction of the project. As a part of the approved development plan, and the development plan is essentially the entitlement vehicle that the city used to utilize prior to this year, there was a condition known as PLN eight of Planning Commission Resolution twenty three four, twenty three dash fourteen, which stated that the planning manager may authorize minor changes to exhibit B, not to exceed ten percent of the objective standards or other approvals, only if the changes are consistent with all applicable provisions of the Solvay Municipal Code and spirit and intent of the original approval. And then there's various bullet points that are on there. And again, this is allow flexibility, but to ensure that, allow flexibility of city staff to work with applicants in the field. If there's a construction issue arises or something just needs to change due to those conditions in the field. This is actually a fairly standard condition. It's actually fairly standard to have this built into your, into a zoning code, which we've actually done as a part of our zoning ordinance update. So it does give a little bit more leeway to city staff to execute what we consider minor changes. So the applicant did submit an application for amendments to the facades. As a part of that, the design review committee weighed in on this, on the proposal. The applicant submitted their application in May, or excuse me, in late, late May, early June. And then this went for review by the city staff and then to the DRC in July of this past year. On July twenty third, twenty twenty five, the community development director issued a determination and a notice of approval with modification. So what that means is that as a part of the DRC input, the director took in the input and reviewed it against the documents that were, our approved documents at the time of permit issuance. So that included the old general plan, not the one that, not the twenty forty five general plan, as well as the old zoning ordinance that was in, that was in place at the time of entitlement. And with that, the director had some modifications. So essentially the facades that are currently out, that are being, that are constructed today would need to be modified on few of the units. Other units were able to be approved to be modified as is. The applicant has appealed this determination and he wishes to proceed with the facade revisions as completed. So what this means is the applicant has appealed the determination of the community development director, including the modifications that have been outlined by the director as directed and as with input from the DRC. And additionally, as a part of that, the applicant has requested modifications to the site plan and landscaping plan. So these are additional amendments that are being brought before you as a body this evening. And so it's particularly the site plan and the landscaping plan. So the proposed amendments are, can be summed up in sort of three key category areas. The first is the applicant has modified the approved site plan, reorienting buildings and addition, and addition of a trellis on the south end of the property. So the reorientation building is actually really minor. Some of them just orient ever so slightly, a couple feet here and there, or the position of the building has been angled off. One of the better examples of that is where the windmill is right now. That's actually been reangled to sort of meet right at the, sort of the forty five of the, of the intersection. This was a decision that actually the applicant and I, applicant and I discussed prior to, to, prior to pouring of the concrete and foundations and simply said, you know, hey, that'll work under a director determination, just provide, provide a revised as-built as we go along. So again, those have been outlined in the staff report. The other one is the modification of the approved landscaping plan. So the approved landscaping pad did have a significant amount of landscaping that was included. As the conditions of the project have morphed and sort of the vision for the ultimate project has changed, the applicant has made a change to the proposed landscaping plan, which we'll highlight this evening. And then in addition to what was already reviewed by the director and the DRC, the applicant has modified the proposed windmill facades with the addition of brick and a little bit, and some color deviation. So, and then the color materials deviations are all outlined in your attachment C of your staff report. So to dive into the proposed site plan, so that the site plan again has been modified for what was originally approved. The biggest one is this trellis system that's here on the south end, and again, the reorientation of this building. It's off kilter, however, again, it's, it's more oriented and directed to the intersection itself. So it was very much a positive change. And then the meeting hall moved ever so slightly and a couple of these units also again crept slightly. So again, the proposed site plan have, are minor in consideration, including with the new trellis, the reorientation in buildings. And the last one is the ability to modify location of off-site parking. So a lot of folks don't understand and don't realize is there's actually no parking on this site. That was an allowance in our old code. It's an allowance in our new code as well. However, our new code kind of reins it in a little bit, whereas the old, old code didn't have a distance at all. Our new code has it five hundred feet, linear feet. It's gotta be away, whereas the other one could have been blocks and blocks away. We intended at the time to have the ability to have both Denmarket Square being the parking lot, and that's how it's conditioned today. The applicant again has changes in the fields of cur. The applicant actually has to work with Caltrans on the accessibility improvements of the ADA ramp. As many of you know, Caltrans is not the funnest organization to work with, as they are a little bit difficult. And so they do have standards and unfortunately, one thing has been tripped up on that standards, the whole thing has got to be redone. So the applicant was looking for a little bit of alleviation of that. And then the idea of having seventeen fourteen, which is the building next door, to potentially be utilized as the parking for the hotel was revived. And so again, the applicant is requesting a little bit of relief of that. City staff actually concurs with that assessment. It's actually easier for the guests to utilize the next door adjacent parking lot. And seventeen fourteen condition approvals actually already allow it. So it's kind of, it's, it's conjoining the two plans where seventeen fourteen already kind of thought about it. This one really solidifies that ability to do it. So there are modifications to the conditions of approval to allow for that. And again, the only body that can approve an amendment, not through substantial conformity, not through anything else, is the Planning Commission per our old zoning ordinance. So you are the body to amend that this evening. The other changes are the landscaping plan. So there is a very substantial deviation from the landscaping plan. The applicant is proposing to utilize faux grass for the majority of it. Because as the project has sort of morphed into not just cottages, but also sort of an event space to allow for private events to be held, the idea of having landscaping all around really encumbers that. It really makes it hard to do. So the applicant is looking to flip that to sort of faux grass. But again, we look at it from both the amendment level and also how this works with our adopted documents. And so there was a substantial amount of landscaping here on, on the side of, along the bank or the old bank building, as well as along Mission Drive, and then some along Alisal. So city staff upon the review has basically added additional conditions to include additional tree plantings on site, particularly those tree plantings along Alisal and also the property line nearest to the old bank building. Include additional landscaping between units six and seven versus the faux grass, allow for low ground shrubs, again, to the satisfaction of the community development director. Shrubs along Alisal Alleroe to reappear, specifically along the proposed new wall. But again, working with the applicant to ensure that the right type of plantings are there to create sort of that ambiance for the event space. And solidifying where the wall needs to be rebuilt on the corner of building F to the proposed new building. Proposed new fencing shall be submitted and reviewed for approval for us. So again, just ensuring that we take a look at that fencing before it goes up. The actual bigger ticket item, it can be done in plan check, and that's applicant shall revise all stormwater calculations for supplemental revisions. Stormwater regulations are not only codified from our end and administered by the Public Works Department, but it is also state of California law, particularly the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So it is a very technical item that needs to get worked and done on the back end. And then added one item to meet our lighting and informants with our new lighting standards within the VMU. And again, that's, that's new one. And then in just ensuring that the path of travel meets all California building code requirements. So again, we're just really trying to encompass these changes and, and work with the applicant in order to satisfy not only our requirements, but the state of California requirements as well. So those are the two amendments that the Planning Commission has, has seen first time tonight. The one is the proposed, the last one is the proposed facade amendments. This is something that the DRC had taken a look at in July with the exception of the windmill. That's the last page on attachment C. So really, the Planning Commission has a couple of options before you this evening. The first one is just upholding upright the director determination in its entirety as shown as attachment C. So we've already sort of outlined what we're looking for in the amendments, again, with the input from the DRC. You can also approve the appeal of the applicant. So you can completely disregard all of attachment C and what you see on site and what the applicant's design package was in attachment B. You can go ahead and allow that for revisions. Again, just direct staff to replace those and we will place those as part of the resolution. The last one is you can approve modifications to either B or C. The DRC did weigh on these. It's not an approval by the DRC. It's, it was actually a, it really was a recommendation to the director. The director weighed in on those comments and passed through most of the comments, other comments actually, such as the roof were let go. And they were let go due to the construction capability and the viability of product. And so those things, you know, were, were essentially let go. You can also add conditions. You can modify those. So if there's a particular facade, like the half logs that you say, you know what? It fits the Northern European design that's been outlined. We're okay with that. You most certainly can carry those through. Again, the way that the code works, at least the old code, was the Planning Commission was the deciding body. You got a recommendation from the DRC. So you four are essentially the, the amending body for this. So you can request modifications to conditions. You can request things that get replaced out. We just, you know, request that you be direct on what needs to get replaced out based on either attachments B or C. So that, I will quickly run through our, the proposed facade amendments. So unit two, and it'll actually go in order. So it'll go to units two through, I think, nine and then through the chapel and then finally the windmill. So here at unit two, on the left-hand side, it was the original proposed design. On the right-hand side is what's there in the field. We've taken these pictures a little bit before, so some of them still have been modified. But again, the director determined that the color to be modified to a dark hue red matching the existing bricks, that the brick facade modified utilizing along the west elevation. And then any remaining stucco shall be approved by the community development director upon final occupancy. And then the half logs under the gable area to be removed or covered with stucco or similar material, again, to be approved by the director. And then removal of some half timbers as shown in the exhibits. And then the DRC did recommend that the bricks be sandblasted or utilize another technique to bring the colors of the brick to be more uniform. So those are the recommendations that were made by the community developer for unit two. For unit three, we did have a color change. The applicant actually has proposed this new blue color. As a reminder, we don't have an adopted color scheme. We didn't have one at the time of this being approved. We are working on one now. The DRC recently adopted a palette for us to push, push forward to the city council for adoption. But in terms of adopted documents, we don't have a, a color scheme. So the proposed blue, it's a darker blue, which is actually in line with the community director, director had outlined. And it is satisfactory to, to city staff. So we're okay with the as proposed with the new color change. For unit four, again, removal of half timbers on the top circle on the entry door. We are looking for a modification of the colors to a yellow hue, either a lemon twist goldfinch as identified by the city staff or actually a sort of darker muted yellow as proposed by the applicant in one of the previous units. So again, colors, we're really looking to work with the applicant, but as to not sort of go into this continual loop of arguing over colors, we are really looking for this city staff to work with the applicant ultimately in, in color selection. Unit five was, we were looking for a reduction of the number of half timbers on the primary entry elevation. And again, the proposed color was actually satisfactory to city staff. So that's all we're looking for at this point is just a couple of half timber modifications. On unit six, the half logs were looking to be removed and with, and either covered, removed completely or covered with stucco or utilizing some other similar techniques, again, in the spirit of working with the applicant. And then looking to modify the color to like a lighter red hue or clay color or another hue color that's proposed by the applicant but approved by the community development director. So again, in the spirit of just trying to work with the applicant to get these colors correct. Unit seven is simply a color modification to just get the color a little bit darker. Other than that, the facade changes were all approved. Unit eight, all the modifications were approved as design, including the uses of brick and the remaining red hue color. On unit nine, half timbers with the curvatures along the multiple facades, we're looking to get those removed and have those patterns reduced to the satisfaction of the director prior to the final, issuance of final occupancy. And then the chapel is, again, it was one of the more prominent buildings of this. So we are looking to remove the color banding. The applicant was looking to do this darker yellow. We actually, the white is what we're looking, white or cream color to remain because white was a pretty prestigious color for churches. And so again, those were this, the two minor changes for the church itself. And then finally, the, the windmill. So this was the windmill in the original drawing. The applicant is now proposing rather than the hardy tim, the hardy siding, instead utilizing the bricks on the, on the facade, stucco on the top and thatch roof, we're actually recommending approval as design. So again, the windmill structure itself is the second prominent structure on the site next to the chapel. It's a forty-five degree angle and it's ultimately likely going to be probably one of the most photographed buildings in the city once completed. And it does meet the intent of both the adopted design guidelines as well as the general plan at the time of entitlement. So this evening, we do have recommendations and alternatives. As stated earlier, Planning Commission can uphold the community development director's determination, allow for the project amendments consistent with the conditions added for facades and colors. These are all located in your, in attachment D of your resolution twenty five oh five. Second is the Planning Commission may request changes to the proposed amendment to the adopted development plan. The commission should be specific on those proposed changes. And again, it could be a mix and match of both what the applicant is proposing or what city staff is proposing, but you have that power and ability to make those changes and direct city staff to make those changes. Finally, you can just approve the appeal by the applicant to allow for the facade amendments based on the applicant's design scheme that's shown in attachment B. Again, if the Planning Commission approves that appeal, the Planning Commission should direct city staff to modify the exhibits in Planning Commission Resolution twenty five oh five, particularly attachment C, or excuse me, exhibit C of that resolution. So I know it's, it's a lot of information. This is, again, it's an appeal of a director's termination. So the project's already approved. It is about three quarters done construction wise. Overall, it is a quality project. City staff is excited to continue to work with the applicant on this project. It is, it is a, better than what an empty field was. And most certainly, it is an added unique space to the city in terms of hotel rooms and potential private events. So it will, it is slowly morphing into a good asset for the city. So we are just looking for some guidance to help get this project to the finish line. With that, I will conclude my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Lots.
Do you want to save them for, wait for public?
Do you want to save them for, wait for public comment first and then?
Yeah, let's get public comment. That's fine.
Okay, let's take it to public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on this topic? Please state your name.
Good evening. Melissa Bates. I am a member of the DRC. I am also a resident of Solvang off and on since 1962. And I would like to just talk about my observations of the project. What I would like to see is that the plan as approved is upheld. That in our community, when we pull a permit, we are asked to abide by the, you know, the account of that plan. I feel like this needs to apply to either big developers or community members. So I think my biggest issue with the project is the, is the facades. And he's, Mr. St. George is asking you to waive the changes of those facades. I do feel like this is a good project and it will be of benefit to the city. Each, each building has its own unique character. But I want to point out that if this is harkening back to the 17th and 18th century Danish builders, those builders were meticulous. Whimsy was not in their vocabulary. I would like to see the facades be more architecturally sensical. There's a lot of design elements there that make no sense if you're a half timber. Why would they be that way? And so, you know, the, the developer also mentions this. He spent considerable time in Northern Europe. And, and this informs his aesthetic. I, I would like you to know that I have been in conversation with a lot of people in Solvang, many of whom have spent years and a lot of time in Denmark, either having grown up there or spent time with relatives. So their, their opinion informs my, my opinions. And I would just like you to uphold the changes, the amendments to the facades. And sorry, I'm speaking like a boomer on my phone, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Esther.
Hi, I'm Esther Jacobson Bates, Solvang resident. I also wear the hat of Chair of the York Design Review Committee, although that's not my hat I'm wearing tonight. I was, I didn't really prepare remarks, but I think it's really important that I come to advocate that you support the director's determination in its entirety. And this project is going to be a significant, it is a significant project in our community, very high profile. It's going to be the background for lots and lots of pictures. We're going to see this for the future. And I've told Mr. St. George that this has the, this is going to be his legacy in our community. This is going to be here long after all of, all of us. So it's important to get this right. The process that brought us here today really kind of broke down. The Design Review Committee wasn't fully weighed in on any of the facades. I think a lot of the reason we're here today is that process breakdown and that kind of continued along the way as modifications came up. It is, again, I can't stress enough that we want to have our community be something we're proud of, that it shows the heritage of our, of our founders and early residents, which we all have known, grown to love and find that unique. Our visitors come for that. We want it to also be something as respectful of our heritage as well. And with the modifications that have been pointed out through Raphael's presentation tonight, I think we're on the path to that. And I look forward to this project being completed and being a beautiful addition to town. So again, I support fully the director's determination in its entirety. And I also support the comments that Melissa Bates just made. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one here? Anyone online wishing to speak? I don't see any hands up or... Okay, well, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and comment.
Raphael, I've got a question for you on this, and that is... It is on. Yeah, so in terms of the units that were moved from their original locations, I believe that was two, three, and four?
Yes.
Correct? Yeah. Why wasn't that picked up by the building inspector when the forms were first in place?
So they, they were picked up and it just, it was noted on sheet that, you know, submitted as built. So we have noted that on a couple of our corrections.
And it's not infringing upon right of way or anything else?
No.
It was not?
No.
Okay.
Hence why it was just, it's one of those things where we noted in the field, we note that the, there is language in the, in the resolution that allowed for it to happen in terms of a director determination. So while we fulfill that is through an as-built, and we did notify the applicant of that. And the applicant is working on that, so.
Okay. Okay, I think I'll let someone else speak in terms of, that was my main question for right now. And I've got some comments to make. I can wait on this. Brandon?
I don't know if anyone would be able to answer this actually, given the context of the meeting, but I was, I was just curious on a specific thing. In terms of the determination to remove the color banding on the roof, curious as to why that recommendation was made by the director?
To remove the banding?
Yes.
Because it is inconsistent with the design guidelines that were adopted back in 1989. That calls for like slate and charcoal and other dark and/or metal seams, not color variation.
Okay.
And a question that I would have is, it appears as, as you have the as-proposed designs and then the actual constructed facades out there. It seems something that should have been pretty easy to catch early on before Mr. St. George put a lot of time and effort into the development. Did you feel that it was close enough to be consistent with the approved design elements that you had?
So again, we discussed this back in May. So by the time it was brought to the attention of the applicant, you know, we, we let them know that they needed to submit for an amendment, and that's what they did. The reality comes back to is we're not on the job site 24/7 and we tend to other projects. And, you know, as, as that being said, it could, city of staff had, could and should have city staff been a little bit more watchful. Yes, 100%. I take blame to that. I'm not here to sugarcoat that. I'm here to, you know, yes, we aired and we could have caught it sooner, but we are here now. And while some of the changes, you know, were good in terms of just that it met the doc, the supported documents that are adopted at the time, there's just need to be put back in place.
Thank you.
Anything else? Keith, you had more questions?
Not more questions, no.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. With the color palettes that are suggestions that are in here, it says, in fact, with all of this, it says that it will be the community directors, it's got to meet to the satisfaction of the community director. Is that because the DRC has submitted suggested colors and that the applicant, for example, can choose from those colors? Or can the applicant come in with something completely different that nobody's seen before and, and the community director happens to like it and that can be applied?
Really what it comes down to is allowing the applicant and city staff to, to work together. We don't want an adversarial role. That's not our job. Our job is to be partners with not only developers, but homeowners and, and business owners. Our job is to get to yes. By having this quantifier, it allows for city staff to, and the applicant. It basically, what it does is twofold. One, we've sort of given a hue, essentially what we're looking for, but allows a little latitude for the developer to stay within the hue, but it's not necessarily those exact colors. So it provides a little bit of give and take because color, each color is different on every single material you put on it. It fades in the sun based on its orientation. It's a different color based on the material it's put on. It's never exactly the same. And yes, we have worked with the DRC over the last couple of DRC meetings to formulate a color palette. But as mentioned earlier, it's not adopted. So we can't legally hang our hat on that. Now, we can use that for suggestions and sure enough, we did. We pulled some of those colors off of there. However, ultimately in the end, that, that is there simply to help speed the process along. And recognizing that for far too long, we've had projects go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And bodies that aren't supposed to be decision makers have been, have been put to be decision makers. And the bodies that are supposed to amend these plans have not been amending them. So we're really trying to righten the ship based on our code and the latitude that's given to us, the city staff. It, it becomes hopefully a trusting partnership ultimately in the end. You know, we're here to serve the people. We're here to serve our residents. We're here to serve our business owners and serve you, the commission and our DRC and the city council same time. A little bit of trust goes along the way.
If I may add, Raphael, do we have a sense of when we might have a color palette adopted?
Yeah, so we're, that's a sidebar. We're hoping to get towards the end of the year when we get a design handbook. Lisa's been working actually really hard on that. So we were just discussing terms earlier today. So, but the big bulk of the work has actually been done by the DRC. And hats off to them because they've, they've taken what was thousands of colors and narrowed it down to a really robust palette.
Great. Thank you.
So I, I can assume, which is probably a bad thing to do, that based on the comments we heard tonight, that the DRC is in step with the determinations that have been made to which the applicant is objecting. Is that correct?
Again, the DRC, the applicant requested an amendment based on PLN 8. We held a public hearing where the DRC got to weigh in on. We carried forward a majority of their wishes, but obviously we added a little bit of quantifiers, a little bit to those things. So I'd, you know, you have two speakers that spoke, but they're not speaking on behalf of the DRC. They're speaking on behalf of themselves. We had no objections from any DRC members about the amendment that, or the letter that was put out. So again, based on the meeting, we, we did carry forward, forward their input into ultimately what was the director's determination.
Okay. So just to clear my mind, we're actually doing two things tonight. We're looking at the community director's determination to which the applicant is objecting. And it's not clear to me that he's objecting in whole or in part. It sounds like it's in whole. And the second thing is there's an amended plan, which is different from what the DRC and what have you had looked at before. So we're looking at two separate things. And how are those going to be melded together? And just from community director perspective, city's perspective, how does the amended plan integrate with the approved plan?
So they're melded together through the resolution. That's, and so in your packet and the resolution, in exhibit A, exhibit B and C, exhibit A, exhibit A being the resolution, exhibit B being the conditions. The conditions, we carried over all the conditions from the old development plan and we struck out one items that no longer were applicable and we underlined items that are amendments essentially. So there, it's why you see X's on the site plan and replaced it with this and then added conditions. So that's how you meld the two together. Attach, or exhibit C is essentially attachment C of the staff report that goes in the back. And so that would solidify what the previous director determination was, was basically X-ing out the old facades and these would be the new facades moving forward. And then how that's all wrapped up together is what's called a planned revision. So the applicant already is currently not working on the site. So the applicant is working with their design team to get us revisions to the approved plan set. And that, essentially, these new conditions tie everything together through the revision. So once we receive the revisions for the hardscaping and the landscaping, the stormwater drainage, we use these conditions of rule to package everything up together and, and move forward. So it is essentially wrapped up into one package.
I wonder if it'd be appropriate to invite Mr. St. George to talk about his amended plan?
If, if that's the case, you can request the applicant to, to speak about it a little bit. But I would suggest reopening it back to public comment.
Okay, with that, I will open it to public comment and invite Mr. St. George to tell us his perspective, in particular with respect to the, the letter where it talks about experiences and what have you on the various changes that have been proposed. And actually, I'd like to know why things have changed. And I know you don't have to speak, Mr. St. George, if you don't want to.
No, sure. I've taken it this far. Thank you. The... This project changed dramatically when I had three proposed projects before the city of Solvang. We had 1693 mission. We had been through, I believe, three DRC meetings. We were going in the right direction. We had spent tens and tens of thousands of dollars after getting direction from the DRC. This project was going to be built in conjunction, was going to be managed in conjunction with 1693, which was to be, I believe, 34 four-star hotel units. That was, it's the old Chomp Building. Okay? I came in with all the direction I needed and the chairman, I wasn't even given the opportunity to speak and to present my project, said, "We're very sorry, but we made a mistake two meetings ago and we should have stopped you and we don't like it and start square one." And that's, go back, look at the meeting, the minutes. I mean, it was amazing. I didn't even have an opportunity. I had my plans, everything drawn to present. I had turned them in. This project was going to be managed by that desk that was going to be across the street. The 55 units we had down the street was also going to be working in conjunction. You can't just hire a hotel manager at $150,000 or $180,000 a year and have him manage 34 or nine. You need to have something of substance to pay for these types of salaries. I killed that project because we had put so much time into it. I was told that the city had no room and no space for anything that was of a farm look, even though this community, in my opinion, was founded by farmers and it was presented to farmers to come in. And so we just dropped that project. It's unfortunate that that happened. I think it was a beautiful project. I think it would have been a benefit. So we went to Plan B. And Plan B is exactly what we're doing right now. We're putting in small shops. We will have short-term stays on top. We will have short-term stays on top, but by no means like a hotel experience like I had hoped. I'm just trying to raise the bar here a little bit. So at that point, I had to make a decision. Do I go forward and build these nine, eight little cottages with a windmill and a chapel at the expense of about $2 million? I don't have the ability of managing these in sense, but what do I do? We've taken it this far. I think it was a beautiful corner for what this proposal is and what it's become. And so I got creative and I thought, all right, what we'll do, we'll go ahead and we'll build it and we will use it as an event center because that's one of the things that I was asked to do when I first came to this town, if I was going to do development. We wanted places that people could have events, that could have weddings, that could have anniversaries. And so I said, all right, what I'll do is we will build it in this sense where you have to rent the entire project for two days, a two-day minimum. You can't have a manager manage nine little cottages. You can't have a cleaning crew just clean nine little cottages. It just doesn't make sense financially. So what we're doing is an experiment, but that's why you see the modification, is what you're asking, the modification to the landscaping. The way the landscaping was set up before was we would have staff over there every day. The staff would be sharing with across the street at 1693, along with the lumberyard. Okay, a rotating staff. That doesn't exist anymore. If this project makes it financially, I seriously doubt if it will. I don't know how many people are going to want to rent eight or nine little cottages. It'll happen, but this project most likely, there is no pot of gold at the end of this project for me. It makes zero sense financially and I think we all know that. So why am I doing it? Because I wanted to build something wonderful for the community. That's why. What I'm hearing is from the DRC members is that one is basing her opinion off a lot of friends that went to Europe. I lived in Europe. I lived in northern Europe for four and a half years. My first wife was Danish. I got married in a church that had a red and white stripe on the slate roof right across it. And we took a horse ride from that very church in downtown Copenhagen to a log cabin. And that's why you see the logs and that's why you see the stripe. I didn't invent either one of those. Those go back to memories of me being married in Copenhagen. The second person from the DRC got up and said, "This is all about process. It's not about the project. It's about process." She wants process to be followed. What's important here is, is this a good project for the community? And if it's not, then you need to vote for denial. If it is, then I really would appreciate you voting in favor of this. I listened for over an hour and 20 minutes while the DRC criticized that project. An hour and 20 minutes, each member. And here's the interesting part, every single one of them criticized the colors. And what I find so interesting is that this is a four-block city, four-block downtown. That's all. Not one of those members bothered walking around the community and actually looking. All the colors that I have have been previously approved by that very board that they sat on. All they had to do is go look. The blue was from the Blue Windmill on Copenhagen. The yellow that I picked was from Mortenson's Nursery. Alan Jones's real estate office is on building number three. Just go down it. Every one of them have been approved by the DRC yet. And that's why I think this is more personal than it is about the project. All right? It shouldn't be about process. This should be about the project and is it a benefit to the community? There's a book that I have right here that I'd like to show a picture of on something. If you, hold just one second. On page 164, this was a book about solving that was written by Ms. Bates. This is a picture of First Street, okay, right across the street from the park. And if you look at this picture, you look at the timbers. They're very whimsical, okay? If you look at the brick designs, it's very whimsical. All right? This is probably one of the most photographed buildings we have in our town. It's beautiful. It's fun. People enjoy it. That's where I came up with the curved timbers. We have some. It's fun. It's difficult for anybody to imagine that farmers coming to a small community, as solving was, as to be, to consider the population they had to have master craftsmen building their homes. It didn't exist. Farmers built their homes and they built them to the best they could. They used different materials that they would find while they were plowing the fields. They would collect them. They would cut trees. They would make piles and then they would ask their friends to help them build. This project, I cannot tell you how many times I had to go back to my guys. I was on that job every single day. My, my crew was there. I don't know if anybody ever saw me there, but I was continually there. And the reason I was is because our natural tendency is to build perfect. Our plaster is perfect. Our stonework is perfect. Everything. We don't build five-foot-nine front doors like I've installed over there. I bought doors from Europe. I paid $27,000 for front doors on that project and for that chapel. Why? Because they're 150 to 200-year-old doors. Come inspect the doors. They are not perfect doors. All right? Farmers built what they could build. When I built the chapel and when I built the windmill, if you will look at the consideration that I put into those, it was much more delicate and it was much more refined. Why? Because they would have taken the time and they would have taken the effort to make the chapel as perfect as they possibly could. The windmill had to be structurally sound. So we made the windmill. There is no curvature. There's no whimsical anything about the windmill. The day I got approval for that, which I actually had to ask for an appeal from the DRC because the meetings kept going on and on and on, and it would have never been approved. I mean, we would still be in our meeting phase because it just kept going on. They asked me to bring in details for lamps. I called Steve Handelman. He's a local artisan who makes lamps. He says, "I will never give anybody the details for my lamps because I don't want anybody copying my plans." I said, "Steve, you need to do me a favor. I got a DRC meeting coming up. You need to make all the..." He goes, "You're crazy. I don't have that kind of time." I go, "Steve, I buy a lot of lamps from you." So what I did, the DRC meeting, I brought all the lamps in to show the DRC, these are the lamps. He wouldn't give me the plans, but here's what I'm putting in. "Oh, okay, that looks great. Now let's talk..." I go, "What are we talking about here?" In that meeting, I was getting pushed down the road again and so I had to ask for, literally had to ask for denial to bring it to the planning commission because I wanted to get an approval. Okay? I wanted to move forward with this project. You're asking me how the changes come about? I've never, and they tried to pin me to a corner. Okay? What about the colors? What about the details? I, in my life, have never built a two-thirds scale home. Not once in my life. I built a fort for my child. That was the closest I ever came to this. These have five-foot-nine front doors. Everything in here is made to look like these were poor people, all right, that were building with the best of their ability. And so I would build. I would run across the street. I'd run across the street to the other side. How does it balance? How does it look? All I say, I just want this project to be a wonderful project for the community. This is the process. The process here, do you approve this or not? Does it look good? Right. Is it a benefit to the community? Right. If it's not, deny it. I mean, deny it. But I can say this, it's, to me, the contradictions that keep going back and forth in my mind, it's, there have been words of hideous by some of the DRC members describing that project. Hideous? I have to tell you this. I wake up in the middle of the night thinking about that stuff. Everybody thinks I've got this super-thick skin. I do on a lot of stuff, but on passion projects, I don't. That project has become very personal to me and that is how the changes happened. All right? That project was not approved with a piece of stained glass that was taken out of a Danish church that was built in the 1800s, but it's in there. It's beautiful. It's Saint Coonut. It's, it's a 13-foot piece of stained glass that cost me more to ship than it did to buy. And this is where the changes come from. This is about passion for me. I just want this to be right. I want people, when they walk by there at night, when I leave those lights on and they can see that piece of stained glass from the outside. Who's going to do that? I didn't go through the process. I didn't go through the process to get stained glass approved either, but it's in there and it's going to be beautiful. The process is in your hands right now. Here we are. Please approve this. I would love to see it approved. I like my timbers. I don't have a problem if you don't like the little log that we put in there. You know what? That was a great memory for me. I'll be happy to plaster over those. But the curved timbers, they're whimsical and there's a lot of buildings in this town that are whimsical and I think we all need to take that into consideration. What are people going to enjoy? Any questions? I hope there's some questions.
Any questions?
Oh, I want to say one other thing. There is red roofs in this town and I'd like to show you the picture of this red roof as well. And this is on page 187 of this book and it's the Everhooi, Elverhooi Museum. It has a red roof, red roof. Okay? So there are red roofs that have been approved.
It's a red tile roof, isn't it?
I don't know. It's a red roof. I can tell you that.
It's a red tile roof.
No, it's not tile.
No?
Certainly not tile.
Okay, yeah.
But that's a very good point. Thank you. There are tile roofs, too.
And a lot, a lot of tile roofs in Denmark.
A lot of tile roofs in Denmark, absolutely.
I would just have a comment, Mr. St. George. I have a lengthy background in government and planning and, and I know there's a lot of passion that comes forward when you have a developer and a builder about something that they want to use as, as their monument to something. And it's just so important when we have a plan. It's a whole lot easier to erase a line on a piece of paper than it is to change something once it's been built, as we're sitting here having to discuss right now. And, and it's unfortunate that the passion regarding the stained glass window and the desire for whimsy couldn't have been discussed earlier before we reach a point where we're either having to amend the plan or change something dramatically, then you're not nervous and people aren't concerned and, you know, to talk along the way. And I get the frustration of going back and forth and back and forth. I truly do get that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Ziegler, but I, I encourage you to go look at the process of what it took to get to this project. I tried that and I just kept getting beaten down and that's why I asked for a denial. And that denial was based on the DRC working with me in the field. And I asked the DRC to come work with me in the field. It never happened. Okay? Maybe I didn't ask for it in the correct way, but I can tell you this. That is why I asked for a denial because I knew if, 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 if a two-thirds scale house is not whimsical to, with the community, that, I don't know what else would be. I started out with whimsical. Who builds two-thirds scale? Who builds, like, I'm not tall and I have to duck through these front doors, but the idea was to have them look like that for when children and people taking pictures of those, enjoying themselves and creating memories. And so I, I hope it works. I mean, I really do, but I would, it really breaks my heart to think and to know that this is going to go, this community is going to go another Christmas, another Yule Fest without that project being built. And it really breaks my heart. And for what? Process? Or because people's opinions that have been told that have gone to Europe? It's really bothersome to me. It really is. I want, I, I have over $2,500 worth of Christmas lights sitting in the bank building right now that was to go on those buildings for our Christmas. I mean, you've seen the way I've lit that corner up before and it was just a field. All right? What we have imagined for that right now is every little kid's fantasy, not just little kids, but people taking them back to when they were children. And, and I understand what you're saying, but I really did try that and it wasn't like, you know, it's, I really don't know what else to say. I appreciate you seeing the passion, but I was very forthcoming, very forthcoming in saying that this is what I wanted to build for the community. This isn't a surprise to anybody.
Thank you. I mean, we can go on.
Yep.
All night. Thank you very much.
I actually do have one more question, though. What is your estimation of the time to completion of this project if the determination is upheld versus if it is denied?
At this point right now, I had to pull my crew off, that project, because of the red tag. And so we have just now started another house that I cannot pull them off of because that doesn't work either. So I would say the approximation would probably be somewhere after the first of the year, maybe January, February would be my best hopes. But I mean, I have.
In either case.
And at this point, yeah. I, these gentlemen have to work. I mean, they have to work. So I didn't have a choice but to put them on another project. So, but I would hope in January, February, somewhere in there. We're very, very close. We're very close. And I just want to kind of defend the city a little bit. I'm not normally used to doing that, but we, we did have double green fencing across the front of there at seven feet. And the city also uses a outside inspector. So, and when we are working, we work pretty fast. We have, it's a good-sized crew. So it would have been a little difficult for the city unless they were literally coming by every day. I don't think you want to pay them for that, but that's kind of how that happened. I will take the blame where it's deserved. He took it from me. I'm taking it back. So, all right. Thank you.
So on the amended plan, and I have to admit, I did not go through in detail and a lot of it's hard to read.
I would suggest requesting any additional public comment before and then subsequently closing that.
Okay, good suggestion. Okay, since public comment is open, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Come ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lynn Peterson. I was born and raised in Solvang and with the exception of living two and a half years in Europe for my military service, I've spent most of my life here. I attended the July DRC meeting and listened to the city of Solvang guidance to the 1704 Mission Drive project and I found the recommendations to be reasonable and in line with the original building permit. Having just spent three weeks in Europe after attending this meeting, I made it a point to pay close attention and learn as much as possible about local building codes. European building codes have deep historical roots, reflecting the architectural heritage of the area. This longstanding tradition helps maintain a cohesive aesthetic across cities, ensuring new developments complement existing structures both in style and color. The building codes in Europe ensure safety, sustainability and preserve cultural heritage, all while fostering community identity. Studying the online photos of what the developer has built does not appear to align with the approved plans and leaves me very concerned and apprehensive of the development process here in Solvang. Unauthorized changes by developers can lead to mistrust and an erosion of trust can have lasting effects on community relations for future projects. We all need to follow the established procedures. The plans submitted as originally approved have the potential to attract many, many visitors to Solvang and will be an asset, but let's work to keep the authenticity of the Danish aesthetic. Thank you.
Excuse me. I don't believe you stated your name.
She did.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Lynn Peterson.
Oh, Lynn, thank you. Any else, anybody else?
I'm sorry, Jack, I would like to just say one more thing is that I am not appealing 100% of, you can't just peel part. I'm not appealing 100% of the recommendations. What I am asking for is to leave the curved timbers and the amount of timbers. I think, I find that appropriate. Like I said, the logs and the colors, I don't care about the colors. I just pick the colors that were existing in town already, but it is not an appeal for the entire approval.
And is that appeal based on financial considerations or just your, your personal style preference there?
It, it's both. It's this project. I'm, I'm just saying there is no pot of gold at the end of this. It's, it's, it's actually both. The, to take those timbers out is to literally, we have to take it out. I have to remove the entire plaster. That means I have to repaper it. I mean, we got to re-waterproof it. It's not a small job by any means. And it does, I- job by any means, and it does—I picked those off the existing buildings that we have in the community already, but yeah, it is—it's a big job. Colors, I don't care. It—it's—I have no ego on the colors. It—those are easy, so.
Well, and procedurally, I have another question. I guess this is perhaps more for the city, but if there—if—if there is—
If it's for the city, let's wait until we end public comment. Okay, thank you. Anybody else online? Nothing? Okay, we'll close public comment. Brendan, you had a question?
I was just curious, at any point in the—the director's determination, if there was any consideration given to, rather than removing the timbers, just having those timbers painted with the background color, so it would essentially aesthetically disappear but not have to be physically removed?
No, hence why it says stucco, so essentially they're not gonna be removed, but instead stucco and plaster be over, because it was—a—that is—a—you know, the—the applicant is correct. It—it would be a substantial amount of work to go back. You'd have to repaper, you know. We took that into account, which is why we said, if you leave them in a place, but stucco over, we'll figure something out, texture it, et cetera. There are techniques, but it is a little bit more labor-intensive, so essentially labor-intensive means more—more cost.
Okay, thank you.
So I—I started to ask a question which may have been answered, and that is, are these mutually exclusive? In other words, if we uphold your determination, are we rejecting the amendment or vice versa? And—and I tried to ask this question before, is how is—how are those gonna be merged?
So again, they're merged to the resolution. So at this point, if—if the applicant has requested that things like the slate tile, that can go to black, that's fine. The colors per sit—or per staff, or what's written in the amendment, that's fine. You can direct city staff to amend Exhibit C to allow for the—the logs and/or the curvature and the half-timbers, and again, we would just then revise that with—but it's extremely specific to say, you know, that we find that the amendment is in good faith with the adopted general plan—or—the adopted general plan at the time of entitlement approval, and we direct city staff to eliminate their determination to remove some of the half-timbers and/or logs, and it'd be as simplistic as that, and we repackage the—the resolution to the applicant, and then the applicant will then subsequently amend their revise—uh, amend their approved building set to reflect what was decided upon by the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. You had more comments?
Well, just more general comments, and I'd actually like to make a motion, and— Mr. St. George, I can well appreciate your passion. I can appreciate what you're trying to do on that corner. I liked the project when I saw the original set of plans. I wish it looked more like the original set of plans, but that's my point of view. I do like it that way. I understand what you're doing with the whimsy, and I think there's a lot of whimsy there, even with these recommendations from the DRC and from the Planning Department. Again, just because this is your passion project doesn't mean that it fits the requirements that the city has for the village area, and I think they're reasonably specific. You've been building long enough. I was a builder as well. I mean, there's rules we have to follow whether we like them or not, and some of them have to do with aesthetics, some of them have to do with structure. I mean, I took out two wood-burning fireplaces in my house, and all I wanted to do was put one back, and everyone said, no. I didn't build it and then ask for permission, and then try to fight it. I waited, and I found a compromise that works for me that's still a gas-fired fireplace, and got approved. To that end, I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendations of the Planning Department and the—which follows the DRC, and move for the changes that have been submitted.
That would be Resolution 2505?
Resolution 2505.
To remain as whole?
As—as written.
So then, just to clarify, that would include the amendment to both the landscaping plan and the site plan with additional work on the landscaping plan as—as identified by the director, and then on Exhibit C, which is the facade, so all the director determinations would be upheld?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I will tell you, I sort of hate the landscaping plan, because I really hate plastic grass, but I'm letting that go. I choose my battles.
Well, duly noted, and we'll make sure to work with the applicant to make sure it looks at least somewhat real. They do look real. They just got some more.
I will second the request to approve Resolution 0525 in its entirety.
I would like to make a comment before we vote.
2505, excuse me.
Yeah. I—I—I gotta say this. I guess it's my personal opinion, as a lot of this is. I kind of like the facades the way they are, but nobody else seems to, so—but I just want to register that—I—and that's why I would—kept going about changes, and, you know, you've said the city wants to work with him, the contractor, and I would urge you to do that and—and be willing to compromise on-on some of these things and not be hard and fast. The overall plan, everybody likes, you know, the idea of it, the little bit of whimsy that's there. One thing that nobody mentioned that I noticed and—and like is that the brick on the windmill ties in with the—across the street and with the—the sidewalk outside, so it kind of brings that corner together a little bit in—in what's happening there. And I noticed tonight, in driving in, that when you come in and you—either on 246 or I was coming down Alisole, you really can't see anything except the windmill and the chapel and—in that one—one building by the sidewalk. You really can't see anything in back until you're halfway down the street, and then you have to really stop and look back in order to see what's inside that courtyard. So the—the changes that have been proposed to that, I understand why—why we might want to do that, but I don't think it's adding anything to the overall approach. I—I like the trellis, for example. I think that's a great idea, to shield that whole project from the parking lot, and also, by the way, provides a pathway up to the mission if anybody took a look at that. So anyway, those are my comments. I don't know if you want to—
I—I would just say one thing, and that is that I think—I think the department has given a lot of slack to the applicant so far. I mean, there's a lot of changes that have been allowed—
Yeah.
—that are quite different from the plans, so—
Yeah.
I mean, this is actually pretty minor, in my opinion.
Yeah, so, okay, so we've got a—a motion that's been seconded. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye with reservations. Thank you. And—and I'd just like to say that, you know, you—you said that there were some things that the—the city did wrong. There's some things the developer did wrong. I think the city, from their side, our side, really needs to work on making sure those types of things don't happen on future projects. We talked about process, that we—we've got a process, and maybe that means that we need to hire more inspectors on major projects like this. That there probably isn't going to be another project like this in our lifetimes, but, you know, it's been a issue with me for years that we have rules and regulations, but we never enforce them. And—and I know that we're making some strides in doing that, but I think they need to be redoubled and—and make sure that, you know, if we've got a—a—a rule or regulation, then it should be followed. If—if nobody follows it or nobody wants to enforce it, then let's eliminate it. Okay.
Well, I think—I—I share a number of your comments, and I think that the—it's on—um, that the upcoming DRC handbook is going to be something that will really help to both clarify and create fairness for all applicants across the board, so I don't know if there's any way that that can be expedited, but I know that we're already working hard on that, and it's in process. So I do believe we're making strides in the right direction.
We certainly want to make it as easy as possible for an applicant to be able to present a project, know where they stand, know if changes are required, or if it can stand as it is, and—and I think staff is taking great pains to try to expedite that process, where staff can make some low-level decisions, minor changes and so forth. You know, things change, you know, the—the topography's different, or something has happened nearby. We understand that. We totally get the frustration in an applicant when it takes so long to get something done, and I think everybody in staff, my observation, is trying to eliminate as many of those obstacles as they can. We certainly are behind eliminating those obstacles.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment briefly. When I was hired almost two and a half years ago now, that was one of the loud, clear messages I received from council, was to help eliminate the back and forth. Unfortunately, this is one of the—what we refer to as legacy projects that experienced a lot of that. We had staff turnover. We had turmoil on the council. There was just a lot of things that we've dealt with at that time. I refer to them frequently when I'm talking to staff as kind of the sins of our fathers, and we—we inherited a lot of this. Raphael was, I believe, my first management senior staff hire, and he has made tremendous strides. We have the general plan complete now. We—we have code updates. We've done a lot of things, moving in a positive direction. We have checklists now. We do not—we're starting to come out of the—the—they're difficult to work with phase of our—of our past, and I'm encouraged and excited. So we hear you loud and clear apologies all around to everybody involved in this up to this point. We're striving to make it better, and—and as been commented, I believe, we're on our way.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, are there any discussion items? I don't see any here. Any Planning Commission comments, other than what we've already—I think we've already covered that, but—
I think I did know.
And the Planning Manager report?
Still Planning Manager report. Need to change that, Lisa. It's okay. So we are still working on our short-term internal amendment directions. That shall be going to council on 9/22. We'll have two versions of our ordinance. Once we get a clear direction from them, it'll come back to y'all, and then we will get going on that. A project to note that appeared on your list, it's actually adaptive reuse at 1697 Copenhagen Drive. That's now in plan review. It's actually utilizing one of our new code sections, simply because the only thing they're doing in the upstairs is converting it to residential uses, so it will not need to go to DRC. It will simply go to y'all, because there is a parking item on there, so—but we are doing our 30-day due diligence and then kicking out any corrections to the applicant, so hopefully we can nail this all down and get this to you probably by the end of the year, if not the beginning of next year, and get that going. So—and again, that's part of our new code, so which is really nice. The City Council will be hearing an adoption of the 2025 California Building Code in November. It's part of our—every three years, the state of California issues out a new building code. However, due to new recent legislation, this will be the last code update for the less—next six years, so they're putting a pause on the—
Do you really believe that?
Well, I'll see it next—I'll see it in two years when I believe it, but that's where the pause is right now. Currently, we're—we're potentially working on either having an October meeting or a November meeting, and—and we're gonna do input from your term. We'll have input on the signed ordinance, so that way, again, that's another project we are working on from city staff level. We've had some really great input from the DRC, and then we're looking for PC, and then wrap it to the City Council, and then come back for actual formal adoption. And then Lisa's been working hard on the design handbook. That would be another item that, once the DRC sort of weighed in, we want you to weigh in on, and make sure we've hit what we needed to hit before making through the motions and taking it to City Council, and then obviously y'all as well, and that is actually the aim of—the handbook, is to have a little bit of fairness in reducing the amount of questions that they have, and ensuring people understand that there—we're all on the same page in terms of how we want things to look here in the village. And finally, we do have the State of the City on the—
October 6.
—October 6. Just wanted to make sure and plug that event. Our mayor will be speaking at it. I'm sure Randy will be there. I will be there, and so—and that's one of our meetings, so we'll see if we have a meeting or not. I'll let you know at a time. That—that concludes my director's report.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:20.